Hi, Ellen. I don't think we have anybody.
Oh, we have one.
Oh, that's just us, right?
Oh, really? Did you zoom bomb? We have had that happen before in back when COVID was in charge. We had lots of zoom bombing.
Oh, my gosh.
That was my first.
It was really bad. Hi, Howard.
Hi.
The gang call here now.
Just in time. Perfect timing.
Held up on County Road 4.
Oh, that's a weird road to be held up on.
That is.
Yeah, there's some.
Weird people live out there.
There are some weird events that live out there.
I know. Hey, easy guys.
What even happens out there that you would get held up on?
All three of us out there.
Yeah, what were they doing? Construction or something? Somebody putting in?
No, a guy had flat tire. And I gave him a ride into town.
Of course he did.
Good guy.
You are pretty good.
And I thought he was gonna rob me.
If I ever have a situation, I hope Howard shows up.
He's one of my emergency contacts. He doesn't know that. Um, alright, May 22nd, 4:02. Um, we'll do a quick roll call of Planning Commission members. Um, Howard Tripp.
Here.
Abby Donn.
Yeah.
Joey Edwards is not going to be here tonight. I think Lupe is also not gonna be here. And Jamie Seck.
Here.
Heather Lind here.
Good to see ya. Likewise.
And with those two absences, will Jamie or... I mean, I don't think we're voting on anything, but you'll be a regular commission member this evening. Um, I don't see any county commissioners here, so I'm not gonna go through.
She might just be running a little bit late, so we'll watch the network. Help me if you see him pop in because we talked to Jeff this morning and I thought for sure Jeff and Sarah would both be here, so they might just be running a couple minutes late.
Okay, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve, and both are a little funky as far as who was there, so we'll see if we have enough tonight to vote those in.
Twelve times a charm.
I know, I meant to open it. My thing. Okay, so February 27th was myself, Abby, and Joey, so we could vote those in if you've had a chance to do those. Um, so we can start with those. Um, February, we have minutes for February 27th.
Uh, we approve the minutes from February 27th.
Well, second, and on favor.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the minutes from uh, the 24th, April 24th, and um, it looks like all three of you were there. I guess I was not there.
Motion, go ahead. You started.
Our motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yay, we finally got those off the list.
Those aren't the longest ones we've ever had. Okay, um, any updates from staff?
Yeah, I was just gonna... So short terminals, um, just give you an update real quick. We've been making progress. So we have been in the identification and compliance period. CCO has really helped with that. And um, through the efforts of a combined uh, team downstairs, we've gone through on the websites to see what's licensed, what's not, doesn't have the proper like um, license number in their advertising. So we've done a lot of different layers, but we are now have sent out cease and desist letters to all um, short terminals that are occupying without licenses. Um, and um, kind of working with them to encourage them to have a voice through the process. Um, of course, they're disappointed at best, um, but some of them we've made headway with and and they are looking forward to coming and adding their voices to the public um, process. So that's the next step that we're going into. And so we just said, um, uh, we're gonna have two town hall meetings, one in Twin Lakes because we have such a saturation in that area. We really thought that it was good to go to that community for input. Um, so we're gonna do one at the schoolhouse on June 15th from 6 to 8 in the evening. Um, uh, snacks will be provided. And then, um, we are, our two dates that we are looking at, and I think the venue will be Freight, is either June 16th or June 22nd. It'll be from 6 to 8 in the evening. We're gonna offer childcare and um, food. And one of the reasons that we are able to offer those amenities along with freight foods because Build a Generation is offering um, support to the public engagement process through uh, their housing grant. So um, we are appreciative of them lending support and helping with the facilitation. Uh, they're gonna help with interpretation as well. I'm sorry, that's the other piece, that their grant pays for. And so um, the um, we won't do interpretation in Twin Lakes, but we will be doing it at the um, in-town event.
And you said the Twin Lakes one is June 13th?
June 15th, I'm sorry, 15th. June 15th from 6 to 8 in the evening. Both 6 to 8 in the evening, trying to think of um, uh, folks working outside of the community that need to get here in time for an evening meeting. And then childcare because um, so that families can participate as well. And then food because we all like it. Because we all like.
And increases turnout, yeah.
Absolutely. And freight is a really warming, warming, like, I just think it's such a, it's just a, I think the environment just sets the community at ease. Like, so when I went to the residence for Responsible Development, I just think it just has, um, you know, really nice um, air to it that just, it just immediately make people feel kind of relaxed.
Yeah.
Maybe it has something to do with the bar, I'm not sure.
I think the bar does.
It definitely just, it's just a really good space. So excited about that. Um, and then on the more technical, I was telling Heather that the, kind of the buckets um, of the scope of the work for the short terminals have been environmental, um, housing, um, character impact, and then the economics. So on the economics part, um, we're gonna be reaching out to the EDC for their um, input, the tourism panel. We've already been talking to Adam. He's going to look at the scope of work um, that their consultants doing on the lodging feasibility study. And we've asked them to expand the scope to include the impact of short terminals on market rates as well as what would placing a cab do on um, the lodging feasibility. So if, if something like that were to be the final outcome or recommendation, what kind of impact would that be? Um, and then on the other technical side of like, looking at the new legislation, um, looking at around the state at other codes, kind of seeing lessons learned that are out there, we've gone to community builders. Um, and we're asking them for technical assistance on that portion to more code focused. And then on the environmental, some of that is probably pretty um, easy to recognize, but we will be working with, uh, David Wilson is now in our department with Public Health, and we'll work with Colleen and the state to just kind of bring some data in about, obviously, in Twin Lakes where we have a fragile infrastructure with wells and septics. You know, what's the potential for um, uh, septic failures and what kind of impact could that have on groundwater and and those kind of things? So we'll, we'll be bringing in the environmental lens. And then, of course, the community engagement portion is um, designed to kind of bring in the community character and culture. Um, and at the end, when we get to the point where we're gonna have a recommendation, then you'll bring all this information back to the Planning Commission. And then we will ask you to help engage with us to, to create a recommendation that we will take to the board. Um, and we'll take that back out for a second round of public engagement to make sure that what, you know, those, you know, we have a list of recommendations just to kind of see what kind of feedback that we get on those.
Cool. Could you remind me when we put the moratorium in place and kind of what the timeline looks like at the end of this?
Yeah, we are, we are on go time because we expire at the end of September. So, yeah, so we are definitely narrowing down into the, um, you know, hopefully the real depth of the work. Um, and so it's, it's important for us to, to get these town hall meetings going so we can get their input, community input on both the locations and then just kind of the, you know, different areas. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. We're all in one community. But I do think that there's specific um, concerns and specific to different areas of the county.
Sure.
Um, and so that we can really get this work going, the feasibility study, lodging study, they're hoping to front-load the deliverables on that to give us what we need. Um, because that doesn't, I don't think they finish until October, is that right? So they're gonna try to front-load um, the data on what we're looking for. Community builders, I'm hoping to hear back from them this week um, with the timeline, um, hopefully. Um, and we do have a backup option if they're unavailable, so.
Okay.
Um, remind me what, sorry, remind me what dates you're talking about for, for the Luddell one?
So either the 16th um, of June or the 22nd. We're leaning a little more towards the 22nd. And it's nice not to have back-to-back for.
Well, and it's a Friday night, and it's night, right, the night before the marathon, and I just feel like there's a lot of very important people that are gonna be really busy on Friday night and are not gonna be able to go. You know, as far as, if we have locals working, that's what they're gonna be doing. That is working.
I think Thursday's better.
Yeah, I think a Thursday night is a little more.
If the choice is on us, is it like a freight thing or you just have to?
So we are, um, Christie is helping us um, from Build a Generation and the Housing Coalition, and so she was gonna work with freight on those dates. Um, we were, we um, divided and conquered and we took Twin Lakes. So I think she was just thinking that was an available, possible date. Um, but we are, um, yeah, I can, I will definitely send her an email out and just tell her that we kind of, I had thought the same. I thought Friday.
Friday's gonna be tough. I just feel like there should be like a good saturation of like, full-time locals here. Some of your second homeowners, of course, will be here on Friday nights, but business owners, locals in the community, like, it's just like to be able to go, you know.
Absolutely.
Working at the retail if you're working at any of the places.
And when we go out for these town halls, we come back and put together a recommendation, and then you said that goes out for a second round. I'm curious how, maybe formal's not the right word, but then do we come back after that second round and vote to pass it on to BOCC, or have we done that before or?
So I think we ground-truth it, right, with, we take our recommendations out to the public again and get feedback on them, then bring that back to.
See if we wanna make any changes before we make the formal recommendation.
We show up with a menu of, hey, we've done our homework, we have options A or B, and let's talk about those kind of formats for round two.
Sometimes, I don't know of options. Oh, I see what you're saying. I mean, I would say, obviously, it's all gonna depend on how it shakes out, but I would say in the past, the, the better situation is that we've all analyzed stuff from the town hall meetings, any other research that's being done with community builders. We're coming down and we're saying, we think based on this feedback, this is the best, I would say usually there's options. I would really, I would say that, hey, guys, this is what we're proposing to the BOCC. Go to community meetings with that and say, these are kind of what we're looking at. This is what we're looking at doing, getting feedback on that. Exactly the way I have you written it. If you ask for, in my experience, if you give a whole bunch of options on the table, you're gonna get 20 back. In addition, in addition to the ones you've already given them.
Oh, I got it.
You know, because they're like, oh, you haven't decided yet, so we're gonna throw this new option on the table that we've probably already gone through and already, you know, and so I think that it's really important to like, as much as we can, which it could be totally different, once we dive into it, that we need to present a couple of different ways. But I think the most you can come forward with, like, we've done all the background work with community builders, we have all this information that we can't necessarily bring you all up to speed with, but based on all that, here's what we have. A lot of times they're like, I can live with that, I can live with that, I cannot live with that. And then it's just like, feedback on this one piece, right?
And then we tweak that here and then.
Before we make any formal recommendation to the OCC. But the whole time, these kind of meetings are all ones that we can go to, all of them. It's not like those other, because this is a legislative situation, so we can go to all of these meetings, be a part of them, be a part of the conversations, BOCC can be a part of them. And then they're gonna already know pretty much what we're doing, and then we'll just make those final recommendations up.
Cool. So do we have a target BOCC meeting at which we would like them to vote on our recommendation?
So it'll be, so when we get to the recommendation, it will then become a code amendment, most likely. The recommendation will have to be codified, um, uh, because it'll be, affect changes within the code. And so then we start an application for code amendment. Just, um, and, and there's gonna be some similarities to like Backcountry. I don't remember if Jimmy, if you.
I was here just at the end of that, and I kind of watched it happen, and then I was on the PC and I don't remember if I voted or not. I'm just curious if this ends at the end of September, obviously if it would just have it codified before then.
Well, so.
Or maybe not.
It'll either be codified or they're gonna extend the moratorium.
Right, um, so.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So it's gonna have to kind of play out depending on how we.
Yeah, I mean.
Time-wise make it happen.
Just to what you were saying earlier about all the rumors swirling around and stuff happening, I feel like the optics of us having set a year moratorium and being able to get it done by then, if possible, is better than, you know, hey, we just need some more time, we're gonna bump this thing, um, and.
Yeah, and I think the public meetings are gonna be really helpful in that arena if we ended up needing more time. But I think if it's really just comes down to the statutory timelines that we have to have things posted for, if it's, and we're like, well, we already have this, so we're just extending it until this goes into effect. It's not so much of an extension, you know what I mean?
Okay.
To me, it is, but.
Right, no, I don't know how much people are actually paying attention, but I think the less changing we can do and the more.
Yeah, if the moratorium is ending tomorrow and they hadn't really heard from us yet, I think yes.
Right.
I'm sure that'll be a component of your guys' presentation. It's just like what, what we're hoping to get done by when.
Yeah, right.
So.
We are definitely, yeah, definitely in go time, and I, you know, um, during Backcountry, when we went out to town hall, like, there was room um, and value in what we heard from the public in changing square footages. And, you know, and there were just different things that really helped um, fine-tune that code. So at this, at the front end, we just really wanna hear, um, you know, what the public has to say about short-term rentals. And then, um, when we have the code, we wanna go back out to them and just, just get the feedback on it. And from there, we, we do have a 30-day notice period for a code amendment, which is what the outcome um, will probably mean. And so if we go back out to them in August, then that's what we would be hoping to do, is to go back out, run that, and then initiate a code amendment that would come, that would play into like, sometime in September.
Sweet.
So for the town hall meetings, is it, it's facilitated by Build a Generation as well?
Yeah.
Will we, I mean, it'd be, I guess, any feedback on agendas or are you guys helping them kind of develop their?
The whole content? We are, we're, we haven't handed it off at all. We are, and so I have another meeting on Tuesday. We've just been doing logistics. Now we're gonna go back to content, but I see, um, you know, most likely there would be an ask of, um, probably Heather or someone on the Planning Commission to have a, you know, speaking, you staff, and then we'll just ask them to kind of facilitate the participation part. Um, we're talking about an icebreaker. Did anybody go to any of the um, housing work for like the design shreds when the um, Mark students were here and they did their capstone project on that? You know, like they had an icebreaker where, um, as you come in, they just make sure you have an app and you can answer some questions and it shows up on the screen. So just everybody kind of gets in that um, participatory kind of mindset and then kind of go into, so they're gonna really kind of try to lead the, the public into participating in, in, in the, in the different um, ways that we might do that. It might be very similar to like they did with the um, Residents for Responsible Development. Yeah, there were some icebreakers, and then there was just some really pointed, different questions where people could provide their feedback, and then all that data was, you know, taken back in. So we've got a couple of different ideas. If anybody has anything that they wanna make sure that we're including in that. Um, but this will be, um, so it is a co-um, branded event, and we very much want um, their help with the facilitation because they're um, much better at that than um, staff is. So um, we're happy for them to help with the public facilitation portion, but we do wanna make sure that we're kind of opening with kind of the intent of the moratorium and in what, and our, and what we're trying to do and in the timeframe we're trying to do it. And I think it would be really good um, for that to have a very solid county presence.
It's just such a polarizing.
Yeah.
Conversation that I think, yeah, having very specific questions and feedback so it doesn't kind of go down those um, you know, individual specific situations or.
It's not a random fact.
Yeah, and I think that we can also um, set up like what we did for the OHB. Um, we have a, we can get um, a way for the public to go in and provide us their feedback online as well. And that might be, you know, really good so that they can participate in a very um, facilitated manner on those evenings, and then still open it up for them to lend their very individual stories and information. So that we, you know, that we don't spend the whole evening kind of passing the mic and going to every anecdotal story.
Yeah.
Um, but, but we still have room in the process for that. If somebody feels very passionate about, you know, sharing out and they didn't feel like facilitated um, engagement gave them that opportunity.
Have you talked to Christie about preempting people's objections? Like, there's kind of two like angry groups of people, right? There's the people who wanna rent their second home and think that we're encouraging on their right to make money off their private property. There's the people who are looking for housing who are saying, oh, all those STRs are sucking all the rental units off. We could softly, delicately, and, you know, um, message to those two specific groups and say, hey, we have heard you, we all have heard you. We know if you're a second homeowner and we feel you, and like, you know, just like, build some empathy and having heard them and, and then at the end of the presentation, say, and to address those concerns, here's the piece that addresses that. And I feel like sometimes we're not that explicit in acknowledging those groups, but this seems to be pretty cut and dry why people are angry, and that if we can pre, like, seed that we have heard them, that we are taking that into account, and that the solution includes having already heard from both of those, maybe that will cool people off? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, and I always also go back to how helpful and how simple, I guess, the like papers on the wall and the posted notes are. Because it's like, sure, write your grief on this posted note and put it up under economics, because then they're able to say it and they're able to put it in, and we're gonna have 20 people on this thing say it's because of this, right? And then we know, okay, we need to address this. Because I just worry that if it really is gonna be a speaking moment for people, I just don't know how anybody will facilitate that meeting. I don't know how that anybody will facilitates people's like grievances and/or opinions that night.
With no timer, hopefully.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, the time is just. And I would say that, you know, I walked into the Residents um, for Responsible Development, and it was a very impassioned group too, specific to, you know, one development, but generally um, very impassioned about all things, and, um, which was great, but it really went well. There was only like a, um, they asked some free-form questions. I think I took three maybe. Um, so the facilitation really is essential to saying, okay, like, you know, this is the format, and controlling the format, and making sure that the voice that they want, you know, what, they, they had their opportunity for their original comments and stuff. But I think it just takes that, that very, um, you know, powerful um, facilitation. I mean, it really, you know, and that's, that's why we went out to them because of, after witnessing that, I thought it was done well. Uh, because that was a very big group um, of people that came, and they were, you know, they were very passionate about what they thought. And um, albeit that they, there weren't really big opposing ideas in the, in the room. Um, and we will most likely have that, I think, probably more so. I don't wanna, um, uh, I don't wanna assume anything, but I think more so in one, in one setting than the other. Um, but I could be wrong. So, um, I think we definitely have to acknowledge that, Jamie. Thank you for bringing that to our point, that we, we may have, you know, very passionate opposing viewpoints in the room that evening, and so how do we manage the fact that we have that? Because often when we go to, um, we don't, you know, and I think we had that in Backcountry too. Um, you know, I think that we, even though we didn't ask for a third party to facilitate that, I think that we managed it fairly well.
It's really a matter of being in control.
Absolutely.
It is, but like, like to, to Abby's point and even to, uh, also including Jamie's point, I think it is all about having a very, very scripted outline, because.
You don't want people to like walk away feeling like.
I feel like I facilitated lots of angry mobster situations, fine, but that's because I'm able to say these are parameters and I can bring you into this. But if we don't have parameters, if it's like, we wanna hear your thoughts on these three buckets, which I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but I'm, I'm saying like, if that, if it were that loose, instead of, hey, here are five buckets. We know that one of the, one of the impacts is it can change your community, and these are the ways we know it can change your community fabric. Here are the ways we know it can help our economy. Here are the ways that we know it can harm long-term rentals. Then everybody's like, oh, yeah, okay, so they already know that we feel these things. Now we can dive a little bit deeper, then it helps get, and I'm sure that's where you were going, but I just, I like, I, like I said, I just go to the idea of like trying to facilitate a bunch of people. And I think the other piece that I would love to see come out of this is, and I will openly admit that I'm, I, I sit in the middle on this topic. I see both sides, but I'm a gray person. I don't see black and white on this situation, but I think it's a bummer that we have some really, really great second homeowners in this community that do a lot for our community, and they feel like more and more so that locals don't like them. And so if this event becomes a, another dividing situation for that, I think that's a bummer, because I think we could get to a place where we can have regulations that work for everybody, not everybody, but for both sides. And perhaps people can start to see like, oh, I see the benefits of these short-term rentals. Oh, I see and understand the reason that people need to regulate, you know what I mean? I mean, I think if you can get both sides to, to that place, that might seem ambitious, but it's just a bummer, because I feel like there, there was a lot more cohesiveness with, um, with it than there is now. And I'm not sure it has to be as polarized as it is. And so I would hate for that meeting to also be, oh, you're one of those short-term rental owners. You don't care about your locals, and that's not what it means, you know, and that doesn't mean that that person doesn't care. And so I think it's really trying to figure out how to get.
It's almost uncoupling affordable housing and short-term rentals to some extent where the, our, our affordable housing crisis is not solely brought on by this one. And so I feel like any sort of like upfront education and background around, just like.
Oh, that is huge.
You know, like, as, as it's starting, like percentages, like housing mixes, you know, what we see in the community. And then knowing too that, and I just sent you some um, neighboring communities that are working on it right now too, but just knowing that this is something that's happening in every single jurisdiction that is surrounding Lake County. And so there's a lot of good information that you can pull, and that we're, you know, we're not uniquely in this situation.
No, no, and I think that's the message that we send out when we have
Yeah.
people concerned about the moratorium too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, setting that stage is.
Sorry, I know you weren't looking for feedback on what you guys are doing, but. But look, if you're gonna do that, this is how you better do it.
See what happens when you open stuff up to everyone's opinions?
It's definitely helpful.
Heather, you and I have been through a lot of, not, not a lot, quite a few controversial periods. And we survived them, but it's been because things like timing is very important. You say you've got one minute or two minutes or whatever it is, and then stick to it.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and structuring, you know, and, and having your eggs in the basket before you get there.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I think sometimes we worry a lot what it's gonna be like, and it never will be that bad. But that's not a bad thing to be ahead of the game.
So yeah, just kind of planning, planning around some of what could happen. Well, in, I just, I think I'm also, uh, I may sell a PSTV from going through the city's short-term rental process, which I thought was absolutely terrible. So I just don't wanna mimic a three-year short-term rental process, and that also still doesn't work. So, um, yeah, I think that'd be it.
Maybe, and then we can stop talking about, talking about, talking about.
Talking about.
One, one frame that I just thought of is like, we're all here in this room, because we want the moratorium to end. We can all agree on that. How it ends and what it looks like after it ends is what we're here to talk about. But we're all united to get it to end because there are benefits of an ending. And if you all can't play nice, we'll just keep, keep it happening, which none of us want, by the way, and maybe that might bring everyone down to a, you know, goal. keeping it happen, which none of us want, by the way, and maybe that might bring everyone down to a, you know, goal-oriented.
It's not a bad frame, like, yeah, we don't wanna sit on it for three years.
But, but we, but we will. We, the planning commission would are, have the liberty.
If we wanna explore this rainbow over here, all right, but that's gonna be.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a truck. Yeah.
I have one quick thing just to, um, and I think one thing that makes, might make this a little easier is just thinking back to the, the BOCC discussion and the moratorium. I don't think this will be, I know it'll be hard, but it's not gonna be a fight at the BOCC level. And I think that I, I'm not here, but like, I mean, I think the three of us C shades are gray, but we wanna get something done that's reasonable. Um, so ju- just to say that like the navigating the community will be hard, I don't think navigating the BOCC will be that in grand scheme of things, that big a fight.
The solutions is what you can get bogged down with. And I think that's to me where three years happened. Because you could do this and you could limit this and you could limit this and you could limit this and you could do this and you could do this. And you could do that all day long. And I think that's the problem with the open feedback is somebody's like, well, I could see you allowing the short-term rental, but only if they did this and then they'll be this many people and then per, per this size lot and then they only have this many cars per this kind of what, you know, and then it's just like, it's impossible for anybody to manage and take care of and do. And so I think that's where I would hope going into this that we're gonna look at simple and effective, like as simple as we can get with it. But if we're talking about, well, this street can have four and this street can have twenty and that, like, I just don't, I might quit.
And, and I think with that too, it's just like, it's good to learn, like a year down the road, see what's happening and like.
This isn't forever.
Yeah, yeah.
This is our first step into something that you can morph as you need to.
Yeah.
Every year, it's getting that first code base in place and then saying, what do we need to tweak? Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that, Commissioner, if you'd like, because in the same way that we don't want to present eighteen options to the public because we have all done our homework with all this, it's nice to hear that you trust us to have done our homework through this other process. And then, you know, just kind of going through the motions with plenty of homework.
I didn't say we trust you, I said we were just.
As long as you present to us what we want, we will absolutely, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just, no, I'm just kidding.
I, I, I think there's a wider and more strongly held set of views across the community than there is at the BOCC.
Agreed.
That did, that sounded a bit weird.
There's this end of the spectrum right now and this end, and there's not a whole lot of people, I mean, I think there are a lot of people. You just don't hear from them.
If we were fighting and it was gonna be two to one at best, that's a harder needle to thread than I think where we are, is what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Does a code amendment have to be approved unanimously at the BOCC?
Does what? I'm sorry.
Does a code amendment have to be approved unanimously through the BOCC?
No, just.
Okay.
Just.
Well, then if you're fighting two to one, as long as the two's on our side, it's fine, I mean.
Yeah, whatever you need to do. All right, sorry, I know that wasn't fun to you about it, but I'm glad we talked about it because I had a lot of questions and.
Absolutely, no, and, and that really helps inform staff's work, so thank you and thank you for sending that information for Abby too. So that's, that is super.
Eagle counties literally proposed their draft ordinance like a week ago, so I just entered the link too.
Nice, thank you. Awesome, awesome, awesome. That's great. Okay, um, other updates. Oh gosh, it seems like there's a lot. Um, we just posted the RFP for our um fee study for cost recovery, so really excited about that. Land use fees haven't been raised in over twenty years.
Wow.
Neither have been short-term rental license, well, short-term rental licenses were raised in seventeen from thirty dollars to ninety-five. Um, and, and special events haven't been raised in a period of time either. So, um, we are going out for, uh, looking for engagement to get that done with, hopefully. Um, unfortunately, it's gonna take a period of time. We'll have a, a recommendation for the board before the end of the year, so, so that'd be good. Um, OHV, we are going to hopefully have a draft special use permit um to the board um soon for their um review. And again, um, we are in moratorium on that until the end of October. Our scope of work includes um youth programming and education. Um, we have a lot of concerns from the public about um youth, you, uh, using a OHV in unsafe ways in areas that they shouldn't be. Um, we're also working with law enforcement to review enforcement and see if it works or if we need to um redo the ordinance for that. And then of course, um, this all has an impact on um commercial outfitting and guiding. And so they're kind of waiting on pins and needles to see where that lands. Currently, the moratorium doesn't allow us to issue any more conditional use permits for operators um who are going to um have operations in Sedill County roads. Um, so we continue to be looking at um the use of county roads. Oh, and, and then the other area of work is creating a county road use guide. Um, some, a tool that we've never had before, but we think will be really beneficial moving forward because it'll be a very transparent tool that without the public work, so we can update annually. Um, so we'll have certain road designations for uses. And then if we have public works projects, we'll be able to annually report out what areas are not um, you know, are experiencing closures or um, you know, construction. So we hope moving forward it'll be really good, but, but the intent of this is to look at a balance between commercial and public use, um recreational use on county roads and trying to make sure that we've carved out um a balance and we've looked at the impact of um, commercial use in areas such as the industrial mining zoned district. Um, and then the other high concentration of use of forces around turquoise. So those are areas that we're really kind of looking at and focusing on what are the impacts and moving forward. Would there, you know, we'll be coming to you again um to bring you our findings about, would you support a recommendation for um some kind of cap per, perhaps on commercial use um applications? Um, you know, have we hit a saturation level um to, so that we can continue to create that balance of public and commercial use? So that's the other, um, one of the other big projects that we're working on. Um, lots of applications coming before us that are gonna, going to be big, lots of subdivision, I believe. Um, that will be on its way soon. And so that's really why we have the next agenda item. I, Cece, can you give any other updates that we have? Building inspector's gone, we continue to look for someone. Um, we're working on water, you know, Bryce did his presentation, which I thought was amazing. Um, to, um, so if you work here for the water, um, I'd encourage you to watch the recording because it was really, really good.
Yeah.
Um, really informative. So, uh, we are working on water, we're working on quite a bit on enforcement right now as well. So we are, we have um been granted permission from the county adminis-, uh, from Tim, from the county administrator to pursue the first revocation hearing in Lake County for a short-term rental license. We do have a company that um has been, we have worked in enforcement before. Um, or a property owner, they're not, to be a company, but a property owner before that was using their short terminal as more of a group camp or um hosting weddings and events. And we've asked, we've shut them down once, um, several years ago. And um now enough time has passed and they are openly doing it on their website again. Um, and uh, another big event was held this weekend. So we are working into what I believe, I don't, you, you guys ever remember a revocation hearing on a short-term rental license?
I mean, not anything, yeah.
So, um, we are doing the research um to bring that information forward. Um, and we haven't notified that.
We have this special event facility if they wanna try to do that.
But they only have, you know, they're trying to operate on an acre.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of hard because, uh, you know, that's why the neighbors in the area are so concerned because the, it's, it's a very small location or the land area really isn't supportive of, of the degree of use that they have placed on there. Um, they're also outfitting and guiding in the Forest Service. So, um, first time we've ever pursued anything like that, we're gonna be bringing that forward. Uh, um, we are advertising for a GIS tech. Um, really excited about that. Um, Bryce has an interview on next Friday. Um, and so hopefully it'll go well, but if you know anybody that's in the CMC program and tell them to please apply and come work with us. Um, and, um, we are working just on um office uh organization and, and kind of strat ops, which is a, is a project uh for the whole county on strategic planning and, and organizational um, uh, goal setting and, and priority setting. So.
Nice.
Yeah. Building permits are tracking about where they were last year. And, but I, and I, and I believe that we are not, we always kind of get a a trickle-down effect, so we are, we kind of always get a late response to things that are happening. I anticipate our building season is going to be as strong as last year with what we're seeing. Um, but I, I think our evaluations are gonna be higher than like the type of design that we see. Those are my updates, I think. And I won't, I won't say, I'm done and then start again.
That's totally fine, you're next anyway. So you get to go again.
So in light of all of the, um, and I know we've talked about this, creating this communication tool so that you all can have a voice at the table with us when we meet with developers. Um, and we just wanna make sure that you have an opportunity, that we create this tool um that you can highlight priorities and things that you wish that you could tell them before they made their application. Um, and so with the new product, it's always, I think we're fine tuning the process. We kind of talked about um the not setting a hearing until we have our completeness review and some different things. Um, just to make things more efficient. But, um, what we're doing now is when we know the applicant, when they meet with staff, we then set up a meeting after that meeting with what we call the community development team. Those are all our local referral agencies, including utilities if, if sanitation and water involved or whomever. And we have them present to them their conceptual plans um, um, before they apply. So once the CBT has heard it, then we're gonna, before there's an actual an application, so again, we're not running it um on any expertise, we're gonna bring that feedback um just for a quick seven-day out to everybody, and if you have anything, let us know. So if the board of county commissioners say, hey, we really want them to consider this, or you guys are like, whoa, like, what's going on? We just wanna create a space on top of this communication tool. We wanna keep it pretty short so that we're not, you know, like we, we're gonna send it out, if we don't hear anything, then we're just moving forward. Um, but if you have something and you say, wow, I'm really concerned and whether it be you would like to communicate something to that developer before they apply or you want staff to know something before they apply, um, we'll welcome that feedback. But we're gonna do it um in two ways to make sure that we preserve our process. Um, we're gonna report out to you in that small window of time before there's an actual application in case you wanna provide a little bit more information. And then we have this, this kind of living document that we'd love for you to send information to us and that we're constantly updating, that we, we give to every single development application that comes in the door. So when we sit down at the table, we can say, and here's, you know, this is a priority communication tool from the planning commission and board of county commissioners, so we just want you to have this ahead of time. Um, so anything um that you feel is important that you want them to know ahead of time. Um, we felt like, you know, really think preserving our single hearing process is really important. Um, but this provides maybe some tools to make our review process a little more robust since our hearing process is very streamlined with a single hearing. So that's kind of why we wanna do it. So that hopefully we are creating a pathway to get more information um in the early stages before you actually have to hear a decision. Does that resonate?
Yeah, so it's kind of like we are another referral agency
Exactly.
in that little window. And then this document exists as just like a, not a one pager necessarily, or maybe it is.
Yeah.
Are there other communities that have this kind of document and do you have examples of those?
Yeah, there's, and I can't tell you exactly, I only know of one. Um, and I can't tell you exactly what community it is right off the top of my head. The idea did come to me from Tim and he's like, oh, there's this like welcome to, and it's like, this is who we are. And it's almost like, like a chamber of commerce when I looked at it, it was, I mean, but that kind of fed the idea of like, well, why couldn't we do this with the board and planning commission? So it was kind of like an introduction from like the visitor center or chamber of commerce kind of standpoint a little bit. But I thought, why couldn't we make, so I guess I don't have an exact um uh example, but we are also extremely unique in having our streamlined um process. Most um jurisdictions will have the planning commission public hearing and then the board of county commissioners public hearing. So I think we have some uniqueness, so I, I guess I, I haven't actually seen a tool that was designed by the planning commission and the board with staff. But I just got the idea from more of kind of a visitor, welcome to our community, here's who we are, here's what we're about. And I thought, why couldn't we design something very similar with the same kind of intent?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'm just curious if we're supposed to say things like, I prefer this kind of tree to that kind of tree? Or we all don't want any McDonald's here? Or, hey, have you thought about, you know, where the wastewater, like at what level does this document function?
No, that's.
Cause I can, cause I can imagine the EDC as they're putting themselves together are gonna have a solicitation document to try and bring businesses in and some of that might be in the form of mixed-use developments or whatever. So like, they're like, here's the demos and psychos in, you know, area of medium income and disposable income and that kind of thing maybe isn't in this or maybe is, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I think, I think you bring up a good point too. I think that in my, in my utopia thi- way of thinking, I, you know, th- this is really good for me to um hear this because I do think that what this form should contain is a voice that, that has consensus. So, and, and I think the thing that you said that made me think, hmm, you know, like the fact that we're, we're working on traffic planning, that should be on it, that we have a wildfire mitigation plan. I think that should be on it. That we don't want, that we don't want formula businesses. I don't know if I have a consensus from everybody that we want that message in it. I know the city says right here, we don't want it. So in the city, if it was a city document, I'd say, city says you can't have it right here. So I guess I just wanna make sure that whatever the document is, is something that everybody agrees with and that we either have a regulation on or it, it actually exists. Um, like, uh, well, we get to our next one if we update our housing needs, like, we have a housing needs assessment, here's where it is and here, you know, we have an active housing coalition. We have, whatever, whatever it is that you want to inform them. I just think that it, 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 it needs to be something that is either in code or exists already. Um, that we, it's not something that we would have to gain consensus on. Does that make, does that make sense?
Well, it does, but then I think our individual contributions, if I want any house that's built here to be bright green is irrelevant. So I don't, I don't know the process by which we collect all the things we agree upon.
Yeah, I think it's because it's a, it's a communication tool to like let them know, okay, I'm a new developer coming to town, I need this. And they already know that we, like sometimes without them having to read the whole entire code and read, you know, all the building codes and, and then also happen to know that there's this housing needs assessment out there and actually having to know that there's some other assessment out there. This document is gonna say, here's all the things you should consider, but they already exist.
Got it, that's.
And it's already a code, so there's no code against greenhouses, so you need to make that a code and then you can put it in the book.
Got it, I, it was unclear in the process of you saying, send your opinion, your, whatever you want included, that
Yeah, yeah, right.
that is a consensus is I think a great um litmus test for, does this document.
Yeah, basically, is it already exists as a code?
As a regulation.
As a regulation or a code, but maybe people don't know about it. Um, and, or is there work somewhere else in the community being done on that that they should identify with because it could become one? You know, that kind of thing I think is important because I think there's people who come in and, and maybe go through the effort of putting together an application, they have no idea that, you know, there's about to be this regulation that's gonna make it impossible for them to do business. Or whatever it is, right? And so I just think that that's the kind of stuff you wanna, you wanna have, like, the housing needs assessment is here. Um, no, there's no, our current STR regulation is just this right now, so if they just looked at that, that's not gonna be helpful, but if no, there's a moratorium right now would be helpful.
And here's the end date and here's the idea.
Yeah, yeah, that's the kind of stuff that I think is important for people to know.
Okay.
And, and I guess to that point, then I don't really know if it, it seems like it's, I don't know what value me as a planning commissioner would add. I, I could read it and be well-versed in it, but I think in terms of like drafting and maintaining it, it seems like, like, yeah, you got, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I, it doesn't seem like it's quite like a living document. Because it's not like we're moving at the speed of light here, you know, like we're.
But I, it doesn't seem like it's quite like a living document, because it's not like we're moving at the speed of light here, you know, like we're.
Well, I think, well, I think, I, I think the code's a living document, and we're not moving at this speed of light on that either.
So it's not like a thing that we would review on a regular basis, like, there's some.
No, but if you happen to be part of some group at some point that's doing something, you're like, know what, that should be in that document, I think that's where you could
That's what I would.
Send the information for them to add it.
That makes sense, I was just thinking that this is.
But I think it's more that like, yes, these guys probably know way more than us, they're going to have everything, we will have very little to contribute, but we will know some stuff, you know, like I'm on the EDC board, I know this thing, you know, you're on this board, you know, the thing about the mineral belt, you know, like whatever it is. Everybody's kind of got these other groups that they can bring the information.
We're like the footnote committee, they have all the code and all of the stuff, and they're like, oh, and by the way, here's the mineral belt.
It might be nice that they knew this, but like, the traffic study, that's a great, a great example, like, may not know that this is being done, or that this reroute is happening, or that, you know, what, so. I think that that's.
Yeah, so like just pulling it into one place so they don't have to search and dig when it's impossible.
Well, I think it makes it feel more welcoming and upfront, but also more, this is who we are, like, either come or go, you know what I mean? Like, because I think that the problem has been that people will dive into it, and they're like, oh, yeah, I can do this, like, doesn't seem like there's that much going, and then they're like, oh my god, there's way more going on, and I have to do. Now all of a sudden I have to do, oh, now you're sending me to this person to talk to? I didn't know that person was on the list, you know, and so I think this just like, puts it all in that one place so that they're not frustrated and taking it out on these guys, and.
Excellent idea.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic, I love it.
Well, I kind of feel like, having only moved here 10 minutes ago, that the attitude of Leadville previously was like, we want to make this as open and not scare anybody away, and now it's a totally different ecosystem, and we have like, good cause and the support of our citizens of like, not scaring people away, but making clear what we are and as a result, what we aren't, and if it's not a good fit, then like, you can go build your thing somewhere else, and that's fine with all of us, and not detrimental to our economy, or, you know.
Yeah.
So I think this is a great idea.
Cool, cool, so, um, I think there was, you know, I always think that, um, everybody thinks stuff like me, and so when I sent, when I had, I'm like, Cece, just email everybody and tell them to throw you your ideas, and we'll just compile it, and we'll put it on here on Teams, and and it'll just be great. And I'm like, wait, okay, that's not, then we got a lot of like, what do you mean? And how do you want us to do it, and what's the format? And so I think, um, I'd just like to really kind of go back to the drawing board and say, would it be better if we started with a template?
Yeah.
And then you go, and then you can go from there, instead of, yeah, and, um, so, so we'll, but but if you immediately have a thought like of something, and you may not, until we have a template, and then we work from there, so maybe, maybe that's the best place. If you have any input, feel free to to send it to us, but we'll start working on one, and then everybody can give us, not in the document itself, obviously.
When we could have a night like this, where we're looking at it and saying, well, who else should be in this document, or what else should be in here?
Yeah.
Under what section?
Yeah, it'd be great to have it during, even if we could throw on an agenda where we have like, what application?
Because you guys also are the first front people that are dealing with knowing what people are looking for, and you're also the first front people that come in and be like, what do you mean, I have to go find this thing out that I didn't know I had to find out? So I feel like you guys are going to have the most information to put in there upfront, and then we can be like, oh, and what about?
That's perfect, yeah, I think you're right, I think you're right, so, sounds good, that sounds good.
Sorry to put more on your plate.
Well, we'll start there.
Okay.
And then, and then, yes, please help us fine tune it and, um, and make sure that it it's got in it what you think it should. So, let's work, we'll work from that way.
Do we care to set a soft date of like, here's the finished living document between you having a draft and us having a thing, and maybe not, I'm just.
Um, sure.
I don't know how quickly you care to do this, or how long you think it's going to take.
I, I hope it doesn't take us too long, I hope it's a pretty easy exercise, I hope, but that could surprise.
Yeah, my, I think my only issue with deadlines is that we're going into, we have a lot of them, we're going into busy season right now, and I would be like, as soon as you guys have it back, maybe email it out first, and then as soon as we have a spot on the agenda, we'll stick it on there.
Okay, but like, end of, end of this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, okay, yeah, no, I'm, soft deadline, you know, not next week, but before Christmas.
Yes, that sounds perfect.
Great.
That sounds great, I can do that.
That sounds great, so then, the next thing on the agenda, everybody okay with that, I think that gives us a good direction.
Yeah, I think, and I love your ideas.
You guys are the experts, that's what I was like, I don't know, you're like, I can't help you with that.
I think I remember what's in the table of uses, but.
But, at the same time, you know, we, we think we think of a lot, but occasionally it's like, oh, yeah, you know, I mean, so it's, it's just like, you just, you all bring.
Well, having the different perspectives, that's like, looking at the document, maybe not as you two will be helpful, because we'll be like, oh, maybe we need to change the way this, whatever.
And sometimes.
I think that'll be super helpful.
So lost in the weeds of things, staff is, um, great at helping me, the team is great at being like, I'm like, oh, yeah, okay, all right, great, yes, that's right. It's really, it's, that part is amazing to have fresh eyes on stuff. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, it became aware, staff became aware that, um, the housing coalition and the subcommittees went to the regional housing authority and asked them to, that they would like to, uh, seek a grant in order to update the housing needs assessment. But in addition to that, that they wanted to get funding for a nexus study, and so at first I was a little surprised, but but then it's been explained to me that it's a housing study specific to inclusionary housing. So for linkage purposes, which is a commercial set aside associated with inclusionary. And so I, what I wanted to find out from the planning commission and from the board, because we brought forward an inclusionary housing proposal, which was unanimously denied. And so staff has moved on in a form of more incentivizing inclusionary, like in our P V process, with more of a carrot than a hammer, inclusionary zoning is absolutely a hammer, for emphasis. And, um, and we have gone back to the drawing boards and defined a way to incentivize participation within our affordability or workforce or communal housing, however, whatever you want to call it. I think it's, sometimes affordable is, is a, is a hard to define term, or I think most people think that. So, um, we've looked at ways to negotiate other ways around instead of inclusionary. And inclusionary, when I brought the, um, proposal before, um, we did quite a vetted process on it. So it wasn't just something that staff did, um, and it was, just went kind of through a 30 day period. We had a whole town hall series on it, we had panelists, we had contractors, nonprofit, we had, um, Department of Housing here, we had CHAPA. We went through a really, really robust, um, we had the whole city hall packed, um, a pretty big engagement on inclusionary. So I would say that it was a very vetted process, and and then when it came before the board, this room was packed as well, I think we had people standing in the hall, and it was unanimous, unanimously denied. So, my question is, do we, so at that time, what lessons learned for staff were, okay, we want to go with a carrot approach instead of the hammer or stick approach. And so that's the way we have started building things out in our code, is from that standpoint. But we want to know, since there's an ask out there, we're just starting to try to to understand, would the board and planning commission want staff to look into inclusionary at all? Do you want us to dive into this, if there's an ask before the regional housing authority to do a nexus study specific to inclusionary? We, we just, you know, so we're trying to kind of decide, is it, are we ready for that discussion again, are we not? And and it's really big, so maybe tonight I'm just planting a seed, because I don't know if anybody could really give me a yes or no tonight. But I guess I want to, want everybody to know that that it's being suggested. It came up in, um, the, when I went to the residents for responsible development, um, somebody did say, I think it was Kim Jackson from the housing coalition, suggested that inclusionary housing or zoning should be considered again. And so, I would, my only, I guess, statements are that there is no silver bullet to the housing situation that we're in, I think that's a huge lesson learned from lots of different places, and that we're going to have to come out of it from a lot of different places, and I do think that there is a certain reliance that inclusionary does have this ability to really come in and, um, really solve things, and and I don't know if that's true or not, I think that we're going to have to use a, a whole variety of things in our toolkit to to make that happen. So, I did a lot of talking, but that's, I just wanted to let you know that that this is a topic that we've had on the table before, and it didn't make it through the planning commission, it, they recommended denial, and the board denied it. So, just want to see what you all are thinking now, since it's coming up again. Do you know when that was? Uh, I think I did it in 17 or 18, does that sound right, Howard and Heather?
I mean, it feels like sooner than that, but maybe.
It looks like.
I feel like there was like no, there was like no, there, there's a whole bunch of years that we're all one year, I think.
Or 100 years.
It was at least 17, maybe 16.
Yeah, um. Everybody knows what inclusionary zoning is, we've done this before. So, uh, just my own thoughts on it, it, my biggest problem with inclusionary zoning for Leadville is that in most communities that have inclusionary zoning, it's not just the developer coming to the table, it's the community, the infrastructure. Everybody's coming to the table to make this thing happen, and we don't have that here. We have the ability for, and what was being proposed and what was being asked is that the developer just has to provide this inclusionary zoning in their development, and it's just not possible. And so, um, the other problem I have with it in our community is that like, the developments, at least so far, the like, in lieu of, is typically what would happen. So like, let's say, let's say 10% of Angel View had to be inclusionary zoning, so they had to basically give one lot, or the equivalent of one lot to somewhere in town that maybe someday will turn into affordable housing. And so my issue was that it's a very, very, very complex conversation and a very, very complex type of, and there's so many different ways that it can be written, and there was no consensus from anybody in the housing group at that time on what the parameters for affordability were going to be, um, which could change now. But what, what has to be, what are you deciding that number looks like, and what's reasonable, and then who's going to manage it, and then who's going to do anything with that land? So, the result of houses available or possible market rate or affordable units available, to me, were like, really, really little for this giant process. And I get frustrated because I personally think there should be more, all this time that we spend on inclusionary zoning, we're talking about it, I wish that we were spending on just putting together one project, just help, you know, and I know that they're doing that, you know, with like, looking at the county lands and seeing which one of those that they can put something together on, but it's just like, to me, we got to just start getting one by one projects off the ground, and I, instead of depending on maybe a future developer, who by the way is going to take 10 years to build out their subdivision, could maybe at the end of that 10 years, give us six units. And that's just, so that's my, my issue with, with it, and and I, and I felt like, like I said, I think because all of the complexities of all of the different pieces, and I think there hasn't even been a good determination on whether or not it's affordable housing we're looking for, or workforce housing we're looking for, and if it's affordable, who's defining what affordable is, and you know, and we don't even have that worked out to then let alone put some regulation in place that's, yeah, I don't know, it just, it just be a headache kind of. But that's where, so you already have my opinion. So, I mean, not that, I mean, if they want to do the study, I guess in my opinion, I guess they can do the study, but they were so angry with us for denying it, and then people who don't have that knowledge behind it just think we were anti affordable housing, but they had, after all of that work, at the end of the day, if they don't have what's affordable, what's this, what's, and and what is it that you want the inclusionary zoning to like, to regulate, and what is the return going to be on that? There's, it just felt like there's no way to go on it, without all of those answers, which maybe this study would help them get to, but I doubt it, I feel like the study's still going to give them the same information, just maybe different numbers, and there's still going to have to be a million different people deciding what those numbers are.
And it was 19, it was 2019 that I.
Yeah, I pulled sooner to it than that.
I'm inclined to mostly agree with you, I think my answer and to your question is yes, we should do the study. And I agree that we don't have a plan. We don't know what success looks like, nobody anywhere has said, oh, yeah, in the next 10 years, we want 387 affordable units, here's how we define affordable, here's the mix of single family, I mean, nobody's done any of that, and so it's hard to make the case for putting rules against a goal that doesn't exist. I disagree a little in that in 2019, there wasn't, yes, on 2A passed, there wasn't anybody in the housing department, there wasn't a regional housing authority, there wasn't this big conversation about housing in as immediate of a way. And I do think we're in a different position now, and I wasn't here then, so to speak.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever hearsay is, but like, I think we have an opportunity now with more people doing the work on this, that we do have some land to give away, we do have a million dollars' bill of money to tap these through the regional housing authority, and we do have a little bit more to contribute as a community. And I don't think we've turned over every stone, but I think, I don't know where this fits in the timeline of all that, but I think this is a good thing to pursue, and maybe as more people come together around this study, it's possible to figure that out. And I don't want to move too far forward without setting a goal. A number of units, a number of years, and a number of percentage J M I distribution, I think are necessary for some of us to agree upon. I don't know in this environment if that's, um, you know, county edict, if that's regional housing authority, something. Who would own that, right? I don't know, I don't think that's appropriate to put in our comp plan, but
Sure.
Maybe it is, I don't know, but until we have that, we shouldn't do anything, but hopefully this will help us get there. And I do think we have more people doing the work, which, I don't know, hopefully helps.
I just don't like the, that, the lack of affordable housing in a plan, like, that's not a, that's not a reason for denial. Like, that's not something that that we can do right now.
Yeah.
And I think that's like a missed opportunity. I feel like there are some, there are enough ways to engage in affordable housing development through a variety of avenues, that the fact that you could still propose a massive development that doesn't impact, like, the biggest problem that we have here right now, like, that's, that's what I would. And I, so I don't know if it's inclusionary housing, but I, I think that's something for me, that's always been in the back of my head, like, realistically, like legally, I do not think we can say no, because you're not providing affordable housing. I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, there is a part of the comp plan that says something generic, like, it's not within the character or something.
Well, and it, we do talk about needing the, the workforce and affordable, blah, blah, blah.
Like.
But it's not something we could deny along, you're correct. And I think that where it gets tricky though, well, like I said, we could dive down this route a whole day, but the problem is that it's any, every development impacts it to some extent, maybe just not to the, the full extent. But if we suddenly had, if tomorrow we had 200 new homes that weren't affordable, they would suddenly make some of these houses affordable. Do you know what I mean? Like, so there is something that happens there, now are they making them affordable to current employment, like whatever the actual AMI rate is, which I don't know. That always gets really tricky too, because you have so many trains, you have people that live in Leadville and work over the hill, you know, so it's just like, it's all such a hard to then take a developer and say, and I think the part, the biggest ask that I had for inclusionary zoning. that I had for inclusionary zoning, that, that nobody could really put together is an actual like developer pro forma. And they did a like fake one, like they're like, well, this is what it would look like. And I'm like, no, 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 I want you to use Leadville numbers.
Yeah.
Because I think if people understood how much money it costs to run a water and sewer line in a straight line down a street, not on little streets and not on little roads, and then to put a sidewalk in because we all want everybody to be able to walk their kids down the street also, and then also pay for the school stuff and also pay for this, if there's not other cooperation there, they can't make them affordable. But the very best buyers, if a developer came to me tomorrow and said, I wanna list a bunch of houses a million bucks, I'm like, well, that's a bummer because you'd sell them if you listed them five hundred thousand dollars. You know, like that's, they want to meet the lower number because it's more sellable at that, but they can't afford to. And so it's not, I mean, I think the problem is there's a lot of ideas that developers are just coming up here to make a bunch of money. And yes, developers need to make money and some are trying to make more than they should, but I think the majority of the people who actually like come in and really try to do it, it's not as much that, it's that they can't, it's so expensive to build up here that you can't fix that. And so, so I just have, I have a lot of hesitation saying, we have no idea what some developer could bring to us at the table, but we're gonna impose this regulation that it is gonna be this, or it is gonna look like this percentage will be this. But whereas the carrot approach that I really like, us starting to work on, and I don't think we've even really explored it enough yet, is, is like, how can we, like, we've talked about it before though, like in all our P V conversations, it's like, how can we say, okay, you want a variance on parking, or you want this, well, what if you were able to do this? And what if we provided this money that we happen to have for DOLA, would you be willing to make sure all the houses stay around this price point since you're already pretty close? You know, those kinds of conversations I feel like can happen, whereas if somebody reads it and they're like already doing their budgeting on a budget, on a, on a builder pro forma, and they have to meet a twelve percent number without there being codified how anybody else is helping, because who knows what grants happen to be available at what time? You can't say for sure the county, for twelve percent, the county's gonna give you this, or just saying you have this twelve percent requirement to meet, then it becomes like, well, just move on. So I just think it's tough because we're a really expensive place, we're more expensive to develop in than a lot of places for subdivisions that are in our price bracket. So like, yes, we're cheaper than Summit County, but we're not in that same price bracket, like, we are very expensive, yeah. Because we're conveniently and very inconveniently too close to Summit and Eagle County. So all of your contractors can get paid a lot more money to work over there than here and we have not figured out how to get them here to build affordably. If we could get them here to build affordably, then we would have, that is the solution. But we don't have that. And because we're not requiring a lot of the housing to be like county workforce, that just exacerbates the problem we're having, so.
And can you say more about what the Nexus study is and what the Housing Coalition was asking to fund? And I just wonder, since I don't know how all these long surveys go, if, if some of these answers might come out of this process?
Some of them.
Or not, about, about what other buckets of money, or like, can you put teeth to the county, will chip in X percent if you do Y percent and?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the Nexus study would come in and give the, the rational proportional basis for the fee in lieu, the, so, so if you didn't want to contribute by vertical construction, then how much should the fee in lieu be, you know? And, and they would help set up the formulas, they would, the housing needs is going to come in and say, update how many housing units are needed at what percentage based on what we have and what our needs are. And so then they'll piggyback on that with the Nexus study that gives us the basis for the formulas for our set asides, our linkage fees, which would be the fees that would be charged for commercial construction, the set asides, how many, what, what percentage of development should have to be at what AMI? So they'll come in with the, the rate of proportional impact, basically, is what the Nexus study will show. And it'll, it will get, it will bring in the financial piece to what we were doing. So before, we were not, we were not suggesting any linkage, we were just doing a set aside in, in the, you know, with the thought, there was a lot of push by the Housing Coalition and the subsequent, after the housing needs assessment and the subcommittees to take the next step into doing inclusionary, and that's what really pushed in two thousand nineteen, this next step. But, you know, part of it was a concern for all of the things that, all the reasons that Heather brought forward. And so they're, they're suggesting, well, let's get a Nexus study to try to, to zero that in a bit more and, and, and go from there. So will it accomplish exactly what we want it to? I'm not sure, but, but that would be the intent.
Yeah, and is there a cost to us to do this? Like, are, are they asking us to do this, or they're just asking for us to share?
They're just asking for support to, to, to apply for the grant.
Cause they need a county entity to.
They'll need the support.
Apply for it under, like, this sounds like we should just do it if it's the numbers we want, but I don't know what it costs us in terms of time or staff.
So they've asked the regional housing authority to, if they should move forward in getting, in applying for the grant. But part of the grant ask is not, so the, the regional housing authority, I believe, or the housing executive manager asked them, said that she'd like to get the data within the housing needs assessment updated. So I believe this is right and just forgive, and please interject wherever I could be wrong, but I think the chain, the chain of events was that the executive director of the housing authority had asked for an update on the study. So they went to go seek funding for that. And as part of that, because this outstanding Housing Coalition suggestion was inclusionary, they then asked EPS, who is, who did our last housing needs study, if they could tack on a Nexus study so that they, they could come in and then push for inclusionary zoning as, as a policy recommendation from the Housing Coalition, the PAT, and all the, the housing entities.
And I consider myself a fairly educated person and like, there are so many organizations and so many people and like, I, it just, I like the idea of like, what's our clarifying goal?
Yeah.
Like, could we, could we, and I, and there's probably someone that's done that and I just don't know about it, so fair enough, but it, it seems like there's a lot of good work and like, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I guess as a somewhat in tune resident, I still don't really know what's happening.
It's cause there's only almost too many housing practices happening, that's definitely happening, but. You were gonna say something, Beth, but.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I overinterpreted what Jamie said at the beginning, but I mean, I feel like a study, like, and also a little bit, what you're saying, I mean, to me, it's like inclusionary zoning is sort of like, like of the spectrum of things to do, it's like over here in terms of its, how formulaic it is, how set in stone it is. And, you know, we've so far taken a bit more of a kind of negotiated carrots, you know, approach, especially like in some of that P U D language that was worked on. And to me, I'd be interested in us, in tacking onto the housing study update, some, something that gives us a little bit more numerical quantitative analysis as the basis of the flexible path we've taken so far.
Yeah.
Like, so I, and, and I, just as one, I'm not opposed to something that could also support inclusionary zoning, I'm a little scared about how much time it might take to key opening up that door, but not opposed to something that could support that, but I'd love it if it was also framed to support kind of more where we are, you know? If that, and, and I have no idea if such a study exists or what it would look like, but like to me, it's like, we don't really, again, sort of what you're making, we don't really know like what pencils out on a pro forma for what we could ask in those flexible negotiations.
And that's where I would see, and, and that's where I got so frustrated with all the studies that happened during that, is I was like, we have a couple of local builder developers that are developing right now. Like, I know they may not wanna totally share their numbers for their current development, but also might. Like, I just think, like, getting Kyle at the table or getting, you know, someone up at Littner's or anybody else who's even just done something smaller scale, is like, just to have them show that like, okay, I had this piece of land and this was land I bought it for way back when, by the way, and then I had to do this kinda, and then these are the hurdles I ran into that ended up costing more money and those kinds of things. And I think it becomes easier for everybody at the table to say, okay, look at this place right here, could we as the county fix this, this piece? Is there some, is there some, you know, these, cause there's so many pieces to it, right? It's the, I mean, I hear the complaints all the time, which are just part of the way we have to do business, but it's like, well, we have this, we have to do all of these engineering and architecture plans for the subdivision upfront, we have to get those approved, then we have to go through more of that. And they're all over the board of all the different things they have to do, it's all these, I would guess engineering maybe outcosts the actual construction in some of these places. And so it's like, okay, well, is that a piece? Is there a piece of that that we can take away or that we can fix or we can morph? And how do we work with them to do that? But nobody's like, we don't have that, those numbers, to then sit there and say, how can we be more flexible with these developers to say, hey, we can take this part out if you're able to make it so that these are the numbers we need it to be? Or whatever it is. And I think that that's, like you said, if we have more numbers and more, I mean, I think the data that could come out of that could be useful too. But I agree with you, I'd almost rather use it in the way of, okay, now let's analyze it for us as a whole, what could we be doing and changing in our code to?
And, and the Housing Coalition has used, I mean, they have that like, you know, pretty sophisticated, I mean, you know, somewhat sophisticated spreadsheet that they've used in a couple of public meetings where you can be like, oh, do you want like town homes or single family homes? What percent AMI do you want?
Correct.
You know, do you want energy efficiency upgrades? And they sort of spits out a number on like what the subsidy level is. So I feel like that even is the basis, you could, like, the scope of work for the study could include like, you know, a dozen scenarios with like current, you know, per square foot construction.
We just needed to, like, all the ones that I was a part of in those conversations, it was all pretend numbers. And that's where I would love to do that, even if we got some real numbers in there.
Yeah.
You know, to be able to say, oh, you want this on this piece of land, this is about what it's gonna cost.
Yeah. I mean, the spreadsheet I've seen that North Prep run in some of these meetings, I mean, they're, they're pretend in that they're not run off of like a literal, you know, parcel.
Yeah, yeah.
Parcel number, but they, but they're real, they're real in that they're not laughably off base, you know?
Cause the ones when I was in that PAT group before and I kinda stopped, we kinda stopped, pulled out of that for a little while, when I was in that before, it was all just data that came from those consultants that are running that PAT organization. And they were la, they, well, depend on, depend on what one you were looking at, but like a lot of them, I felt like, it was like, yeah, so you're gonna have these three thousand dollar water tap fees and you're gonna have this thing here. And it was just like, okay, but now can we put in what it costs to do that in Leadville? And so I think that that's, that's just what's hard with those numbers. And the problem is, then all of that, and I, and I, I just wanna make sure that any data that's coming out of some of these studies, because that's very misleading to the general public that don't know what fees really are and what it actually costs to build something. So then it does look like we're all just sitting around on our hands, not doing anything, when clearly you can build a townhouse for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know? And I think that that's where my frustration with those numbers comes from, is because there's so many people then in that group that are just getting more and more riled up when it's like, those aren't real though. We gotta put in the real numbers and I, and, and then know really what we're dealing with as far as, I just don't know how we can solve something if we don't have those.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, I'd love to have that, cause it would be so interesting to be like, okay, if you're building like sixty units and, you know, your tapping fees are subsidized, then you can do it for this. If you're building like eight units, you know, in the city, you know, with all that stuff done, then here's the reality check, you know? So I think we, you know, somehow if this, if the scope of work of the study could be, you know, to have some, yeah, current, I, I agree, like, disagree, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Current numbers, you know, and some like reasonable range of, you know, small to large developments. Cause it'd also be good to know it for like the hundred and fifty unit, two hundred unit development, cause we're gonna, you know, get that too.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to promise to do anything about inclusionary zoning to get this study done, right?
No.
But if it's, but if it's run by the house, if, if, if the grant is to the Housing Coalition, they're going, I mean, they're gonna, and, and the county and city aren't contributing to it through the housing authority budget, then we're gonna have less control over the scope of work.
But we still get to see the full report, even if what they're trying to do is pitch inclusionary zoning, we can look at all the other numbers and use that for our comparative real number analytic purposes, right?
But I don't, I think they're thinking like, what do we need in hand to push for inclusionary zoning, not what is this an analytical exercise that we were just talking about? I don't think that's in their scope of work right now.
Got it.
So we need to ask for that? Or even.
Or say that's a problem. Well, and I guess also no.
Hey.
There is some like, and I think it's just careful how we support something, but that was kind of what we did last time, as we said, yeah, I mean, definitely do the research on this and bring it to us. And then we voted it down and they were really mad that they spent all this time working on inclusionary zoning and we, again, you know, we didn't support it. So I do think there has to be some conversation of, we maybe aren't saying that we need you to do that work, but we aren't gonna disagree with you doing it and the information, the numbers that come out of it could be super helpful. And if it leads to that down the road, great, but we are, I just think, we have to be careful because these groups are working lots and lots of hours on all of these conversations. And if they get a yes from a group and that's what they get, they're assuming support.
Sure.
And, and I think that that's a, that's an error we've made in the past of that assumption is there. And I think it's more of, no, we, we're supporting the research and if you're choosing that that's the focused research. But I think that's again, where it is important sometimes to say, we aren't opposed to looking at that focused research and or that, that perhaps focused situation. At this time, we've been focused on kind of this approach and what we would be looking for or what we're really interested in finding out are these numbers and these numbers, of some of which you'll find in there, you know, that kind of thing. This kind of generally been what we're doing. They at least know, okay, this is where they sit. They're not saying, no, they won't consider this, but right now they're working on this carrot, you know, incentivization approach, then I think that at least lets them know. It's a communication of, here we are, we're not saying, we won't support it, but we're not saying.
What's the development down by the intermediate school? I can't remember. What is that? The development down by the intermediate school.
Taylor Star.
Yeah. It's like, so we saw some attempt.
It's the second time.
Yeah. And maybe you'd be willing to share why? I mean, I think, I know that was somewhat infrastructure, right?
Yeah, it was, they, they couldn't get their lift station approved from Leadville Sand and all of their development can't be gra, gravity fed, only a portion of it. So we got the resolution from the sand district, right, when he had his sketch plan in, that said that they would no longer approve subdivisions with the stations invested. So that's why he's taken a timeout to work on infrastructure. But he was coming in saying that he would donate land for affordable housing or obtainable or workforce. So that was gonna be his contribution through the, through the development.
Well, Heather, I think that optics of us supporting whatever surveys are, are going forth is really important. And I think that historical, like, we've seen what happens when we say yes too loudly. And so if we say yes, but, just as loudly that that's important, I think it's also important to realize that like, the overall goal of any of this is to get more affordable housing and that we don't have a lot of affordable housing right now. And so we have. Of any of this is to get more affordable housing and that we don't have a lot of affordable housing right now and so we haven't yet found. The one or the multi-pronged approach that gets us to where we want and I think it's kinda like you were saying, I mean, everybody's kind of doing different things and there's not one north star. And I don't know if our but could be, but we're only gonna move forward with any of this if we all. The PAT and the housing coalition and the authority and the county all agree on a certain amount. And I don't know if this helps define that or confuses it more with more numbers, but like I almost think that's the place. To start to know, how do we even know if we're doing a good job getting this to happen cuz right now. We don't have, you know, a hundred deed restricted units in Liddo.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of if we, yeah. Okay.
Is that helpful, Anne?
So, but I think I heard I should have said this, that I it sounds like overall, nobody would be um. You know, if 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 they seek getting an exit study, the only thing that would would like to maybe reach out to the regional housing authority and say. If um beyond an update on the housing needs assessment. We've discovered that there is um talk of an exit study specific to inclusionary. And we want to see if the study would include these deliverables. Um, that and we could fine tune the the data that we're hoping that. We would get from the measurable data that we could get potentially, is that something that would be included? We just like a more, we could reach out and at least say we'd like more information before we would know how to um respond.
Right, because the housing, the update to the housing needs assessment is gonna give us the majority of the data you're talking about, I think. It's the. Uh, more focused on inclusionary zoning stuff that's gonna be in the nexus study and but. I feel like developer performer, things like that, it's to me should be a very important part of that research, so it wouldn't be weird to ask for that. If that part's not included in it, then I'm not sure, I guess. If, I mean, the data, the actual data is not gonna hurt us, but I don't think it's like. Providing us much of that new numbers, I think the housing needs assessment that they're already doing is. And I was saying, hoping and I.
The needs isn't a commitment to a plan, it's just a statement of here's the housing deficit we have and because. All of these entities that are on paper interested in more affordable housing haven't said of the, I'm gonna pull a number out of my butt, of the five hundred units we need, we're gonna do. Two hundred of them in the next window, we all agree to that, like, that's what I think we need, it's less. It's good to update the needs, but then having a plan that we all agree on. Because we're not gonna hit a hundred percent.
I don't think they're doing, they're not doing that.
Well, but maybe we as one of the entities at the table can start moving towards. Getting people together and maybe that's.
I would say that's the regional housing authorities, you know, like to a certain degree, they are very focused on that and original, this. Housing needs assessment will definitely drive their further grant work, the innovative grant, the pursuing, the um projects for the housing authority to pursue. So just like you're saying, we've got a lot of people in the mix and let's figure out what lane everyone's in. So a lot of that work will serve the um. The regional housing authority and their oversight and pursuit of creating development that fits those needs. So, but the planning commission, what we wanna make sure is that we've got the code that supports that work. So it's it's not that we're going, the planning commission is going to go out and do. Um, the actual work, I mean, that's why we've created the regional housing authority to to actually do that work, to work the projects, to find the sites, to. And I think what we need to make sure is that that planning, that the land development code is a tool that supports supports whatever those needs are. They think inclusionary zoning is the answer, or they're just wondering if it's the answer they wanna know again. So the regional housing authority, I think, are just kind of open to, yes, we would like the housing needs updated. And the housing coalition is coming and saying, well, we want to, we think it'd be great to add on this because then we'd be queued up for inclusionary. So the ask was kind of, is there belief in planning commission and the board that we would wanna amend the code? Perhaps, so it would that be a viable tool, so that was kind of the way that they came in with the ask, but then we. And looked at it from a variety of different ways.
Well, I mean, I think it would if it makes sense and it wouldn't if it doesn't make sense, which seems like the point of the study, right? If they say we wanna put X amount of units online in the next few years and the only way to do that is through inclusionary. You know, here's our proposal.
It's not an inclusionary zoning study, it's a nexus study based on how to charge fees and set aside. So I I think I need to get probably more information because I don't think that they're coming in and saying that they're going to give us an analysis on it on. Inclusionary zoning, I to. I think the nexus creates what would a linkage fee be? What would a set of site be, so you I I just need more information because a nexus study is definite, it is. Is how you design your impact fees, how you design your, um, you know, that's not, that's not all inclusive, I don't believe. I don't think the scope will be all inclusive of how successful or unsuccessful inclusionary zoning will be.
Yeah, the conversation on what inclusionary is, and I think that's what I was trying, I think that's kind of what Jeff was saying earlier too, is like the actual. I don't think there's any consultant that will come in and tell us we should do inclusionary zoning this way. It's just gonna be, we'll lead you on this charge that will take. Lots of time to get everybody on the same page of, and that's what I'm saying, like, it could be so complicated cuz you can be like, well. We think X number of units should be this AMI, we think this number of units should be this, well, we think, well, if this happens, then this should happen and we think it should be this percentage of developments and we think it should be this. And that's the piece that if we go down the road and say, okay, yes, we wanna dive into inclusionary zoning. You're gonna spend a lot of time, this group or whoever's group is gonna spend a lot of time then going through. Well, you think this, but I think this and he thinks this and she thinks this and now how do we make the code, the one single code that goes into our book? Correct, you know, it's not a super easy. Like, well, this many units, so therefore this is how we have to do it. You know, it's gonna be a really big, and that's how it was last time, I mean, it was a long. Year and a half at least, if not two year process of. And it was a big group, a big housing group, it just, we did not have the official housing authority at that time, but we had the housing coalition. And we had lots and lots and lots of meetings and um outside of the planning and zoning meetings that we also had and um. Yeah, it's just, there's a lot of rabbit holes in that conversation that can happen and so I think that that's that's where it's hard to say. Oh, yeah, I wanna go through that again when we didn't recognize there was enough of a benefit to spend that time on it.
Go for.
So I think that's where the question is more of that, but not to say that that doesn't mean it can't still be a tool we use.
Sure.
So I think that's what, yeah.
Okay, and I definitely don't understand enough about this process, the process that happened before or the different levers and switches in writing this new code.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean ignorantly, I think, is there a way to do a ten percent code change and do inclusionary light? And get everybody to say this all ninety percent sucks, but we agree on ten percent? And start to put that in or does it have to be such a hammer or a rigid type of thing?
So it was proposed was what what you would describe as um inclusionary light, that's that's what we were starting with, we weren't coming in. Um, so, you know, we couldn't or or the proposal wasn't um propelling or convincing. Um, that it could bring about about um change without putting. Um, too much, the 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 set of sides were achievable, even at, I think it was, it only hit. Major subdivisions with. Gosh, I could look at, I think it was ten or more units.
Or more or something.
Ten or more units, um, and then it was a ten percent, so ten units got like one um. Or maybe it was even, no, it was ten percent, was it twelve percent?
That's what I had in my brain, but maybe not.
But, you know, it was light, there was nothing for commercial, there was no linkage fees, it was, it was light, um. And we were looking to make the fee in lieu higher because then it was to incentivize development versus. Money because we didn't have the regional housing authority yet, because we didn't have. Um, the different programs in place to really utilize funding, we needed units built and so that was another pain point is that, you know, um, and. It was actually being done before, we had supply chain demand and. Uh, labor was hard, but it wasn't impossible like it is now and so, I mean, we've had some things changed, certainly in the building industry that are making things a lot. More difficult because um building cost has gone up and availability is is harder and labor force is harder and.
Demand is higher.
Demand is higher and so it's it's so those things weren't. They were hitting, but they were nowhere near hitting like they were now after COVID, so um.
And can I comment quickly on something you said quickly, this is obvious, but like, there's like, the nexus study is like an analytical economic study, you know, but. Then then there's like policy judgment on how you set your inclusion zoning and then the payment in lieu, like you can set it really high. So that that really incentivizes developers to actually build.
To build instead of pay.
So lower than people, you know, developers might choose to just pay that fee and goes go into a housing authority, so that that's a policy choice, like, do you kinda want the money? Cuz you have a functioning housing authority with like stuff ready to build or programs ready to run? Or or do you want stuff built by someone else?
So would it be fair to say that perhaps. Inclusionary zoning heavy is like the only. Choice to make a difference and that it might take a few years of going back and forth and changing all these percentages to have the effect.
I think you're gonna get a million different opinions on that.
Well, well, right, and I guess I meant to say that it's an imposs- to get the heavy version with enough of the parts figured out is just very laborious and time consuming and harder to get consensus on. Albeit a better outcome if it's possible to put that together and it sounds like you're saying you don't believe it's possible to put that together or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we're just so small. We're just so small with really high fees and so you don't have, you know, a whole lot of two hundred unit developments happening right now.
Right, it's hard enough already and we.
Yeah, it you don't know, we already don't have a lot of development.
The ceiling is low and the floor is high and within that little window.
Yeah.
Hard to get the perfect mix since we're not taking three, two, three, two, three, two developments a year, okay.
And but, you know, like I said, I mean, if it if it, yeah, it's just, I, yeah, I think that if it was like we had a a whole bunch of West parts happening or something like that, that would be an easier. Way to digest that it's feasible, but we have so many variables through the developments that are like. Between between all the infrastructure and the geography and the location and the all of the pieces that. Yeah, it's just tough cuz I don't know that a heavy or a light. I think either could work, I think the light could work if there was a little bit more understanding behind. Where where the gibs are because it also um. You know, uh, ten percent, twelve percent change for developer light is still a lot of money. And so what does that change, so now you've just created, depending on how much affordable that house has to be per per what he actually costs them to make it. These other houses are now that much more not affordable. So it's not. So that's the issue that you're gonna constantly run into and so if you're heavy, that's just gonna be more of a disparage and and like how you.
Right.
Right.
And then the regional housing authority could develop a hundred and twenty units on the climax parcel right now. In the absence of inclusionary zoning with as many parameters as they wanted. So.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's the only hundred plus unit development that we're talking about theoretically. This, like you're saying, wouldn't affect most things. Right, it'd be more hassle than it's worth to get inclusionary zoning.
You could build more sustaining funding for for U two use land that's already like shovel ready. And and you see, you have to think inclusionary would be something that we apply straight across the board to all development and right now, I think what we're trying to do. When we have conversations is look at each. Development agreement individually and what can we incentivize out of that? Um, and there's 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 a lot of different options, there's a lot of different things that we can do in a lot of different areas.
Almost every development needs something.
Right.
That we that they can't, you know, especially that's why they go through the P V, unless all of them need something, I think so.
Need to s- s- setback or needs a density or needs a parking or.
Yeah, it's just there's so many weird things going on or they're or we can recognize that they have this huge infrastructure problem. And although we may be code or whatever can't do anything, if we do have this grant that we know is out there and we know that. Whoever's in charge of that is willing to allocate funds if somebody's willing to do. Affordable housing within their development, that's something that can become, you know, talked about and said, hey, well, if you think that happier development's gonna be this anyway. Why don't you get, you know, the money to help with this and this and this, you know, I I don't know, I think that that's kind of the conversation pieces.
Yep, and you have to think that one of the biggest automatic or what what most developers are seeking are density bonuses. That immediately changes all the performance, the minute they ask for a density bonus, that puts some into P U D. And then they have to furnish some type of um opportunity to provide housing. But we've left it pretty wide open for them to choose one of those five different criterias, you know, that they do a deed restriction, that they participate in um something like a light tech. That they donate land, that they, you know, one of our criteria or one of the choices is to do something completely outside of the box, like they, their own original idea. Of a way to come forward and participate in in community housing needs, so. The minute they wanna deviate from their code, then they have to go into P U D and then. Everything becomes a negotiation at that point because they're coming in and asking for hybrid um code to be able to create their own zoning. And at that point, it opens up a completely different conversation. And so, but but inclusionary is on the table, inclusionary just is the hammer and it treats everything the same relatively. Um, and it's just a set aside, instead of a nuanced kind of um approach to. That kind of negotiation, what do you need in return for that, so so everybody's got skins in the game and we're all working in the same way, so it's it's just that. Incentivizing it versus regulating it, so it's not that we're not. Seeking options and ways to find affordable, you know, attainability um communities that serves our community. It's it's do we wanna apply a regulation that's straight across the board a regulation? Or do we want to find a more nuanced approach where we look at development on kind of on a case by case basis? Knowing that the majority of them to get where they need to go is through P U D, once they go P U D, then they're required by the code to participate in it.
Right, and so we'd rather, it sounds like we would rather spend the time project by project negotiating what is best for us instead of unilaterally applying inclusionary. Which to Heather's point, wouldn't apply to most big developments because we don't have lots of big developments, is that correct?
Okay, so we just talked about this a little bit earlier today, I mean, like, I, in general, I like rules that are really crystal clear. So I would like a formula, you know, also thinking about like what about fifteen years from now when there's like not this great group? You know, sitting around the table, you know, doing that negotiation, like, the more I can lock it in, the better. In this case, I I I am persuaded at this point that you 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 can't write the right formula. You know, and that it's better to have the flexibility, but I think it's not, just I I think your question was like, is it better this way, I think, I think, you you know, you can make the argument that, I mean. Pro inclusionary zoning people do that it's better to just have like the real clear ask, you know, um, so I, you know, uh, I. Sorry, I was gonna come back and like, like. Are we trying to, what was the original question, like, be back to Jackie or to Chris Lee on this?
We're gonna solve it tonight.
Good, 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 cuz the sense in my head is like, like, I would love the scope of work to be like analytical work, you know. Like nexus study, comma, and analytical work that could support negotiations under our current P U D. Comma, current. And and potential other elements of the code, comma, and community initiated C B A negotiations.
I love that. My response is fantastic. That response is fantastic.
And we have it reported.
Um, yeah, because then every, yeah, and we can dive into that.
Then everyone's happy and we actually have numbers to support all the things we are or could be doing.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that scope of work is like, I'm just curious what a consultant would do with that scope of work, cause that's a bit broad. But, you know, we could flesh that out.
I think it's worth an ask. Absolutely. The question for sure. I think the, um. Because the potential to take that data and, 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 and even if it's just knowing it through the P V process and or. Modifying the just straight subdivision regulations to include something that helps with that as well. I really do believe that if we're really handling the negotiations part well, it could actually result in more. Units than inclusionary zoning could have resulted. And I think that's where I was trying to go with it. And maybe it's not to this like specific AMI that we've decided inclusionary zoning is, but it's. Overall, it's becoming a more balanced housing environment and, um, yeah.
And, and back to the language, I mean, I'd honestly love, you know, like, if the C B A thing is like happening, I'd love that to be based in reality, you know? And something that developers aren't gonna like walk away because of, and same with our P U D, you know, I, I feel like. Our, currently, I feel like, I like that language we read on P U D, but it feels like I'm going into a negotiation kind of blind.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I would love to have any data, you know, or analysis to sort of come in with a better.
And I guess one more lens for this. In, in our last meeting, Bryce and I. Or and Sarah were talking after the meeting about Bryce's putting together a map, a layer. Um, that's gonna show us. What actually is left, you know, to be developed, because it's far less than you think it is. So the other piece of this that I, that I keep going back to is we have developable land. But for major subdivisions, for the infrastructure, for all those pieces, it's not nearly what you think it will be. And, and so to understand that and, and have a meeting, and that was part of the idea, I think, that we had. Earlier is if we could take the map and really look at, okay, where do we want this type of development? Where do we want, does our core code support what we think the community is now? As far as our future planning map. And so I asked him to put that map together and we could have a work session. Um, in the near future, when we have another, another slot available, would be that we can have that, just look at the map. And we don't need to talk about inclusionary zoning per se, but it's thinking about housing, it's thinking about future development and where we wanna do it. And then it's thinking about the broader conversation that we had before. Because I think that I know it, because I know it, uh, from my job, but, and then Howard knows it from being the assessor, but I don't think there's. Just the general public doesn't know, like, and understand, like, we look around and we think we have so much land, but the majority of it's public land. So, which is awesome and helps us a lot. But I think it's really important for people to be able to look at that map. And, and everybody then make decisions based on that true understanding of where is infrastructure? And that was the other thing he's gonna add is the infrastructure layers too. And I just think like having a work session one night with that is gonna be really, really helpful, because we can start identifying areas where we think there should be. More density, which will equate to more affordable housing unit possibilities than something that's less dense. But then you have to be willing to allow there to be a lot of density right there, right? And so that's, like, we all talk about this, but then do we really want it? And that's the problem in that we've seen with A D U's and things like that too. And so. I think it'll be a good way to look at that, because I think we're having the A D U conversation too. So just in general, I think that map could be a really good helpful tool in these housing conversations as well as just. How we're gonna start approaching applications coming in.
And, and that's a great lead in to just one more thing, just, just an update, that I have reached out to community builders on two different fronts. One is on, uh, technical assistance on short terminals. The other is to do a county engagement with a focus on housing, economic development and, um, land use. Um, in preparation for our comp plan revision in twenty twenty five. So I've asked them for like a deliverable timeframe of the fall of twenty twenty four. So that we would start creating that future growth plan, um, and have them kind of help facilitate getting us all on the same page together. So I haven't heard yes, but we did get awarded the Affordable Housing Toolkit. Um, so, you know, if it's not E P S, maybe, um, that's some more, something to, I'll ask Jackie to kind of watch our, um. Discussion tonight and just see if, um, that's not a place to plug them in, but if we do end up getting, you know, really engaged with them on a, on a bigger, broader scope of work. So, might be something possible too.
Yeah, I agree. Having more truth and knowing that we have a fixed amount of everything, um, and publicizing that, I think will be helpful. And it makes sense now that we're spending more of our time in these, not intimate, but custom negotiations, rather than applying such a broad blanket that. Maybe, or maybe would and, and up for debate and a good debate and trade offs and all of that. But that if we're otherwise gonna spend three years talking about how to get all of those numbers right and still maybe not pass it. What we're doing in the meantime, maybe could arguably be better. And that we have an opportunity to get more data and more numbers and then with that be even more strategic. Once everyone knows, okay, well, there's only room for X amount more units, period.
Yeah, I think the lens really needs to be on, on, on whatever it is. All the data needs to be like county specific. Um, cause yes, there are communities doing all of these things and all of these different pathways all over the place, but we, if we don't know what we have. Both cost wise, land wise, infrastructure wise, if we don't know that, then we don't know how to apply any of those, I don't feel like. And so I think that if we can, if everybody can kind of understand that piece, cause it does, so for me. Because I know these parcels and I know which ones we have left, I'm like, well, there's like. Eight options here we're talking about for the potential of, of, for, of inclusionary zoning, you know? And I think about them and their density and this, that, and, and so it is hard, because, I mean, that's not true, but, um. You start to know them and you start to know the areas really well and you're like, okay, and I think that if we're able, um, as a community to look at this map. And I guess community, I mean, these representatives here, look at this map and identify, okay, based on what we know of the community. This area over here is gonna be a no-go for this type of development, or this area over here makes the most sense for. Future development here, whereas this isn't gonna be developable. We know that already. So when an application is coming forward or a conversation is coming forward, there already have been conversations and maybe we adjust the zoning based on that. Or, or the zoning, uh, requirements in the code are changed, or whatever it is, we do the code amendments to make that. Look like what we now see Lake County as, because I think a lot of our growth happened so fast in the last couple of years that. Um, yeah, we do have to kind of be a lot more aware of where, where we're gonna allow stuff and where we shouldn't and how that should look, so. But knowing.
Did you give Bryce a deadline?
I think Sarah did, maybe.
There you go.
Yeah, probably.
I think Sarah, I'm sure Sarah did.
Yeah, probably so.
Sooner the better.
But we could check in with them and see, cause the next time we have an opening as a work session, I think that should be.
That sounds great. We have a very, well, I never should, we should never use the word.
No, better say that easy.
Not gonna say that. Uh, we have a, 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 not a, um, in real in-depth, um, application. We have an A D U in West Park, um, on June twelfth. I think that's, I think that's what the date is. Um, but that's the only thing. Um, we have another one that we were hoping to get, a C U P that we were hoping to get before you at the second meeting in June. But I think it's been bumped till July, um, cause I don't think that they had enough time to get us their review items. So I know that's gonna be in July. If these subdivisions don't hurry though, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're probably gonna all hit at the same time. And it'll probably be July or August, um, for the subdivisions and then they will, they'll, then they're gonna be, you know, that's just on, they're all at concept stage. So it'll be next year.
So, uh, yeah, if we can add it to one of the June meetings and check with Bryce that he can do that by then. Uh, I feel like he already had, when, when he was talking about it, he already basically had, he has.
A good portion of it, cause we were looking at it for.
And he made some notes of like extra that he was gonna do, but it seemed like he already had, the layer already exists. But he's gonna make some changes just for us, cause I think he was gonna take out back country and stuff like that, because we aren't gonna look at that as. Develop. So, and he had already done that back, cause we were doing, I can't, it was back country, but there was something else.
Yeah, and he'd already done the layer for us. Gosh, when Paul was still here, so, um. So I know he's got a, a layer to build from that he can, so it shouldn't take too long. Yeah, that'd be cool.
And, and even wherever he's at, cause yeah, I feel like every conversation, like that I've had with him or Sarah's had with him, like we had, oh, and then what about a layer of like.
I don't know.
So we should probably just like, whatever he has. You know, cause I mean, I, I, I think a lot, I, I, I'm curious about like what parcels of land can still be like minor or major subdivided.
Yeah, he has, he has that.
Yeah, so.
And he has that and then he has the layer that just shows water, the water stuff.
But there's, there's current water and there's potential for gravity served.
Yeah.
Water, which are, which are different.
Right. So, yeah, we'll start with whatever he's got. I, he took great notes when we were talking about it the other night, so. I feel like we had a good basis. At least it'll be a good one for us to start with and really, because even just knowing. The actual land without the infrastructure is already a, a good enough, like, oh.
It's a good visual to get you, you know, just really, so. Puts everything into perspective, so. Well, thank you, um, very much for that. So we'll get a template out to start with and we'll respond, um, with some thoughts to. Um, Jackie in response to the ask.
Yeah, that's Jeff, that was a good, good response.
Perfect, perfect.
Cool.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, I moved.
Yep, I, yep, I am.
Nice meeting.
On favor. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks for all the great territory.
You gotta stop.
Stop the recording. Oops, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there. Only Yan did not recording.